Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. It is seven o'clock, we will begin. I hope that everyone enjoyed the Martin Luther King holiday yesterday. Perhaps had some time to not just relax, but maybe reflect and even take some action, as it were. I'd like to begin the meeting with the pledge of, oh, excuse me, the roll call, excuse me.
Bruno? Burghart?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Cavan?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Casarog?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Mayor, here.
Swanson?
Here.
Fantastic. Alderman Maladra, would you be so kind as to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Craig. Marissa's gonna do the magic there. Before we begin the business tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna share with you a couple photos that were taken earlier this evening. Alderman Maladra and I were thrilled to be part of a celebration in the beautiful Allendale neighborhood. At about five o'clock, Alderman Maladra, myself, and a whole host of neighbors walked down to this young lady's house, Beulah Dries, who today celebrated her 100th birthday. She, yep. Beulah was kind enough to invite me back, much to the dismay of Maladra, and talk about her life, which I'm gonna take her up on, but interestingly enough, folks, this is what is so fascinating, but should really be of no surprise. Born on a farm in Iowa, Beulah used to ride a horse to school. She moved to Omaha, because that's where the jobs were. For 60 years, she lived in Omaha. She worked in a bomber plant. She was one of the Rosie Ribeters. Isn't that amazing? She has this cool convertible car in the garage. Unfortunately, she had to stop driving at 96. She is an extraordinary young lady, a beautiful woman. She was so thankful and grateful that we celebrated, and of course, on the right or on the left, depending on your view, Craig and I declared today as Beulah Dries Day in the city of Geneva. She gave us permission to post these pictures, so if you're out and about in the Allendale neighborhood, you will cannot miss the sign in her yard that reads, and it's gotta be what, four by four letters? Happy Birthday Beulah. So when you go by honk or something, but what a lovely, lovely lady, so thank you for indulging. Happy Birthday Beulah. Thank you, Marissa. Item 3A, folks, a public hearing on vacating and selling Colony Drive, a public right-of-way located in West Haven of Geneva subdivision. I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Alderman Maladra makes that motion. Alderman Cavan makes the second. All in favor of opening the public hearing? Please say aye.
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 The public hearing is open. This public hearing is for those who are in attendance to discuss, ask questions about, or share opinions regarding this matter. This is not a public hearing for the council to deliberate discuss. I believe Mr. Philipchuck, sir?
Yes, good evening, thank you. My name is John Philipchuck. I'm attorney with offices at 111 East Jefferson Avenue, Naperville, Illinois. I'm here this evening representing Ann Maron. Ann lives at 278 West Haven Circle, immediately adjacent to this Colony Drive. The staff gave a nice brief history of it, that it was originally plotted for a public street and dedicated as such on the plat, but then never installed because of how the property to the south developed ultimately with the church use, so. My client has been maintaining it off and on with another neighbor ever since she's been in her home since 1994, I believe it is, and so it is with that backdrop that she finally said, you know, maybe it's time to have that land transferred to her ownership, and so we prepare the necessary paperwork. It's always a question, and of course, as the statute reads, you know, it's up to the municipality to determine, you know, who should get the property and what, if any, compensation should be paid for it. I'm sure there are some that think, well, the proposed payment isn't enough, but I would point out that there's certainly value to the many, many, many years that she has paid for the grass cutting, the fertilization, the weed killer, et cetera, et cetera. And if you drive by it, if you've driven by it, very well maintained, of course, it's a very nice neighborhood. But at any rate, that consideration, the fact that she went out and hired the land surveyor to prepare a plat of vacation, and with that, we're hoping that the city council will vote to approve the vacation of that right-of-way and have the ownership ultimately, excuse me, given to Ann Maron. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Philipchuck.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here this evening regarding this matter who'd like to speak during this public hearing? Yes, sir, welcome.
Evening, everybody. My name, can I take the mask off?
Yes, sir.
Great. My name's David Durvey. I live immediately adjacent to the west side of Colony Drive. I've been there for, I believe, 25 years, along with Ann. I'd like to point out, we both have pretty much maintained the property in those years, and I think it's a wonderful idea that she's pursued this and it's been setting their idle for quite a few years. The city's done nothing with it, nor have they maintained it. In fact, they did not even seed it originally. I talked with Dorothy Flanagan at the time. When I moved in, it was a dirt road that went to the south to get excess topsoil for the remaining lots in the subdivision, and once they completed removing the dirt pile, I asked Dorothy, what, you know, what were you gonna do with it? And she says, well, I don't know, what do you suggest? And I said, well, if you give me hose connection to the fire hydrant and perhaps grate it out, I'd be more than happy to seed it and water it until the lawn got established. So I received a letter from Mr. DeGroot stating, don't quote me verbatim, but I believe the understanding is that perhaps we both have right to this property. If that is true, I'll throw my hat in the ring and say, well, yeah, I'll take half. I'd like half. If Ann wants, Ann and I have discussed it. She thinks that's fair. I see no, from what my understanding is, there's absolutely no value to this property. It's cannot be sold. It's too small to be buildable. There's absolutely no use to anybody other than the immediate adjacent landowners if they choose to take ownership of it. There's a right-of-way pretty much on all four sides of it that makes it even completely useless to us. I think the only benefit, well, there's virtually no benefit to me or her on receiving this property, other than perhaps knowing that our kids can play on it and we're not getting in trouble doing it, although my kids are grown, so that's kind of a moot point, too. The, I think by vacating it, you would be doing the city a favor by taking it off of your liability and your responsibility if someone was to get hurt on it, and ultimately put it on either Ann and/or my lap. So, nothing more. I hope you vacate it, and we'll see what happens. Thank you very much.
And sir, if I could trouble you just to spell your last name, so we have-
D-D-U-R-O-V, as in Victor, E-Y.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just so you know, ladies and gentlemen, our city clerk is participating remotely this evening, as he is not feeling well. So I know sometimes it's helpful to have the spelling of names, so thank you very, very much. Anyone else in the audience this evening, or who wishes to speak on this matter before I recognize Mr. Philipchuck a second time? Mr. McCrea, is there anyone online?
No one joining us.
Okay. Mr. Philipchuck, sir?
Yes, just kind of a final comment, and that is, if Dave is interested in having a partial ownership of this lot, then I would suggest that if that be the case, then he should agree to split the costs that my client has incurred in hiring the land surveyor to prepare the plat of vacation, whatever remuneration the city decides that they are going to accept. We have offered $3,500 and my legal fees in helping her put the petitions, applications, et cetera, to the point where we are tonight. So I think it's only fair that if, in fact, he wants to step up now and claim, gee, I want half too, then he should have to share in those costs with her, and in that event, if the council chooses then to grant half to each property owner, that's fine. Thank you.
Before I recognize if the gentleman's interested, Mr. Durovy, a second time, I'm gonna ask Mr. DeGroot, is there anything you need to add regarding this discussion that we haven't already heard? Okay. Mr. Durovy, sir, with respect to the specific question to you, are you prepared to respond to that overture?
I guess my only response would be that for 25 years, we've let a sleeping dog lie. Like I stated earlier, it's, I think, Ann and/or I would be doing the city a favor by taking the liability off their hands by you vacating this property to either her or I or us. I had no desire to pursue it, knowing that it was pretty much dead. I have no desire to spend any money on it. With, I think if Ann has had an expense on her own, that that would be something that her and I could negotiate between ourselves without the city being involved. So, thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna ask the city attorney to speak to the matter as presented and as discussed between-
For this evening's purposes, there's only one petitioner. Should the city council grant the request to vacate, they could put conditions on it for both, for the petitioner to share expenses, but that would be something outside the parameters of this tribunal, and it would frankly, as we stand here today, this matter, there's only one petitioner. So if she wants to share the expense or the obligation with her neighbor, that's fine. We can make an adjustment on any subsequent paperwork. We would just need to know that before we signed off on the final resolution, plat of vacation, et cetera.
So tonight, the question at hand later in the agenda is simply vacating the land. The, forgive me for trying to pretend, but the, it's not even ex parte, but the conversation had should not bear on the decision to vacate or not vacate.
Correct.
Okay. This is still the public hearing, ladies and gentlemen. Anyone else in the audience wishing to address this matter is certainly invited to do so and join us at the podium. And there is no one online, I believe? Without objection, ladies and gentlemen, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Casarog, seconded by Marx. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, aye.
The public hearing is closed. Moving on the agenda, folks, item 3B, we're gonna welcome back Marissa to the podium. Marissa Walker is that sometimes anonymous figure in the back, who has helped us low these many weeks, not only set up for the meetings, but troubleshoot these meetings. And Marissa, I know you had the pleasure of saying hello to the council some time ago, but the community hasn't said hello to you. So I wanna give you the opportunity to introduce yourself. I know a couple things about you, but I wanna give you the floor. So first of all, welcome to the city.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. You are a Geneva native, correct?
Yep. Been here all my life.
All your life. Geneva grad?
Mm-hmm.
Off to Bradley?
Yep, Bradley University.
And what did you study at Bradley?
English.
English, really?
Got a Bachelor of English.
And just kinda switched careers, or?
Um, well, mostly because I wasn't sure what I wanted to do.
Yeah.
And I did do tech crew stuff back in high school, so this stuff kinda falls in line with my interests.
Oh, that's fantastic. So you were involved with all the theater productions?
Yeah.
Well, that's cool.
From like sophomore through senior year.
Well, that's cool. And of course, you live here in town?
Yep.
And I trust that your supervisor, Mr. Collins, is probably watching.
Uh...
Do you think tonight?
I'm not sure.
What's it like to work with Pete?
(laughing).
No, I'm kidding, don't say, I'm just kidding. So far, so good, from your perspective?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I would say so.
What do you find most challenging? If anything at all?
Pete?
Here?
Yeah, besides Pete.
Hey, Pete is fine. No, it's just little things, I think.
Yeah.
Still figuring out the little details and how to do certain things.
Right.
Otherwise, it's not too bad.
Good, good to hear. And you don't cover just the city council or committee of the whole meetings, you cover other public meetings?
Yeah, I do planning and zoning and the historical preservation meetings, too.
Wow. So you gotta let us know, you're in the back room, you're in the control booth, as it were.
Yeah.
And some of these meetings are perhaps lingering on.
(inaudible).
Yes, yes. Do you find yourself thinking, oh my God?
Um, that's, sounds like a trick question.
No, it's not.
I don't know if I should answer that.
No, that's, well done, by the way. Nicely done. Were you ever here in city hall prior to starting your career with us while you were a student?
No, never.
So your first entree was when you came on board?
Yeah.
Wow. Anything about the city you've discovered since you began?
Uh, a lot of the things go over my head. Things are very complicated, which I don't know if that's new information, but just seeing kind of the depth of it is definitely interesting.
It's interesting, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Nope, she's not on camera because she didn't put it on herself.
Oh, well, heck, way to go, Marissa.
I can't remember how to-
Just so you know, you're not on camera.
No, I did that on purpose.
Did you really?
No.
I don't wanna be perceived.
That was sly, man. It's like-
Ben knows, uh-
Ben knows how to just-
Look out.
No, you're not allowed to switch it.
You should've said that was an accident.
People think you have some sort of high security clearance or something.
Ugh.
My goodness.
I purposely left it on the mayor, no.
Maybe Ben does.
So besides, besides working with all of us and working with Pete?
No.
No.
What else you do to occupy your time, Marissa?
Um, mostly just leisure stuff, so-
Yeah.
Listening to music, video games, that kinda stuff.
Well, that's cool.
Especially with the pandemic going on.
Yeah, it's interesting, isn't it?
Yeah.
Very interesting.
Definitely an interesting time.
Indeed, it is. And you found the, I know you, I know the answer to this question, but I would assume you work with all the staff on troubleshooting all their challenges as well? Or do you not?
Um, I mean, tech challenges, yes.
Tech challenges, right, yeah.
Yeah.
Are there a lot of tech challenges?
Uh, haven't run into too many so far.
No?
Nope, not yet. We shall see, though.
Alderman Maladra has a closing play for a computer. Do you guys, do you know what that is?
Has a what?
Never mind. Any questions or comments for Marissa, ladies and gentlemen? We're delighted to have you.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, I will-
And you will sneak back in.
Yep.
Thanks, Marissa.
Keep the camera on.
Yeah, keep the ca, yeah, exactly. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council and can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderman Marx makes that motion.
Second.
Alderwoman Burghart makes that second. Any questions? Any comments on the omnibus? If not, recording secretary Dawkins, please take the role.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Item five, the omnibus agenda has been approved with a vote of nine in the affirmative, one absent, or excuse me, zero nay votes and one absent. We jump down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask Ms. Dawkins to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $3,527,350.14.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pay the bills as presented. The items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderwoman Burghart makes a motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available in the council members' packets and on the city's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Swanson. Any questions or comments regarding the bills? There were several Q and As shared with the council earlier today, and of course, those questions and answers are posted on the website as well. Ms. Dawkins, whenever you're available, please take the role.
Ruby?
Aye.
Cavan?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burghart?
Aye.
Municipal base, the municipal bills for payment have been approved with nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. There were no committee of the whole items of business. We jumped at item 12, presentation of ordinances, resolutions, petitions, and bids. Item 12A, recommend approval of ordinance number 2022-01, vacating and selling Colony Drive, a public right-of-way located in West Haven of Geneva subdivision. For clarity, that tendered offer is at $3,500. With that, I'll entertain a motion to bring this matter to the floor. Alderman Maladra makes the motion.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marx. The floor is open for the city council. Questions of either, oh, excuse me, but first a summary for, provided by Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so Ann Maron has petitioned the city to vacate Colony Drive and to sell the property to her in accordance with Section 11-91-1 of the Illinois municipal code. Notice of the public hearing was provided to the other adjoining property owner and published in the Daily Herald. Public Works has identified public utilities located within the right-of-way, and therefore, should the city council approve the requested plat of vacation, it should be conditioned upon the city receiving a 10-foot public utility easement along the western portion of the right-of-way and 20-foot easement along the north and south portion of the right-of-way. I would also add that all documents should be subject to final legal review prior to execution. So we do have Director DeGroot with us this evening if you have questions. As you heard from earlier, we have Mr. Philipchuck representing the petitioner, we have the neighboring property owner, we have city attorney Sandek, we have all kinds of people to answer any questions you may have.
The floor is open, ladies and gentlemen, from the dais. Alderman Maladra, sir?
So just for clarification, we are talking about property that cannot be, it's not, it's not a buildable lot.
Correct. Correct.
Sorry. It's not a buildable lot, correct?
Correct.
We've had it since when?
Since the subdivision was approved in 1992.
1992?
Two.
And so since 19, and we purchased the property for the purpose of if development took place south of there, we would do a connecting road, correct?
Correct. It was, it wasn't purchased, it was dedicated as part of the overall subdivision, the West Haven of Geneva subdivision, and the intent was to provide a connection between the residential portion and what was supposed to be a commercial development to the south.
Right. And since 1992, we've never contemplated any other use for this property. Also, correct?
Not until the church was approved in 2003.
And when the church was approved in 2003, what did we think we would do with the property?
Well, the plans then did not call for the connection via Colony Drive.
Right.
So we abandoned it at that time.
Right, I'm sorry to cut you off. Basically, where I was heading is, to my mind, this is a property that we had for an express purpose. That purpose is no longer applicable, and there really is nothing else to, to that property that adds value to the city of Geneva as an asset. I know that if we go to an appraiser, an appraiser is gonna sign a dollar amount, but at the end of the day, we are probably not likely to see that dollar amount were we to try to sell the property, because nothing really can be done with it. It's in a residential neighborhood, there may be uses, but I don't know how many of those uses are allowable by code, and I don't know how many of those uses would be considered neighborly. For example, if we were to turn it into another dump site, I don't think that would be very neighborly of us. So to my mind, although there is a theoretical dollar value on the property, for all practical purposes, there is no value to this as an asset to the city of Geneva. And so I think that vacating it for use by the neighbor who's taken care of it since 94-ish is probably the best thing all around. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the dais or Alderman Mayor remotely? Alderman Casarog, sir, the floor is yours.
I'm curious how, I'm sorry, and I know you asked for the spelling, but-
Mr. Durovy.
Durovy?
Durovy.
Durovy.
My apologies.
How that process legally works, so you said we had one petitioner, that's what caused today. Now we have somebody else who seems legitimately, from my point of view, interested in half the property. Please.
I'd just like to clarify, Ann took this upon herself, which is wonderful. Once I received a letter from the city-
Come closer to the microphone if you could, thank you very much, sir.
Once I received a letter from the city, I contacted, I believe it's your Mr. DeGroot?
Sir.
He informed me that I also had right to it. That's why I'm here. If, I know Ann's had the expense of pursuing this, I think it's wonderful that she has. I also feel that if there is any, let me clarify also that, yes, she has been taking care of the property, but so have I, and we have both spent quite a bit of money throughout the years. We could put a value on that, which would be way in excess of, I've heard $3,500 come up, which is peanuts compared to, I know what she's spent and even what I've spent in the 25 years of mowing it, fertilizing it, aerating, you know, everything we've done as if it was our yard, but I digress. The only reason why I'm here is because it was pointed out to me that I would also have an option to have, if necessary to. I have absolutely no use for it. I, it was stated that the west side has the 10-foot right-of-way. I could not even build a shed on it if I wanted to. What was your question? I'm sorry.
My question was actually more for staff, but I was interested in hearing from you, so I'm glad you spoke and I'm glad you have done.
And just for clarification, for Alderman Casarog and for anyone else who perhaps might have a similar question, and forgive me for having to deliver this news concretely and deliberately, there is only one, quote, official petitioner this evening.
Correct.
If in fact, this council decides, whatever action they take, let's assume the council takes the action to vacate, if Ms. Maron and our friend wants to discuss amongst themselves something separate from what this council decided, that can be done, and then as the attorney recommended, the final documents would reflect that deal they struck. But tonight, for purp- But tonight, for purposes of consideration of vacating that land...
It's all Ann.
Forgive me, yes, it's all Mrs. Maron.
Not a problem.
And Mr. Philipchuck, our attorney. There is no, how do I phrase it? There is no standing, if you will, by the gentleman we just heard from. It's only Mrs. Maron is the only petitioner this evening.
But should we decide that we want to give him an option...
We cannot do that this evening.
Would we then vote down the agenda item?
Not necessarily.
And then let that be renegotiated, because that gives all the property to Ms. Maron, right? I mean, that's the ordinance I read in the packet today.
She's the petitioner.
But the ordinance gives all the property to Ms. Maron, and he's saying he might be interested. That's where I'm confused, on sort of the agenda item.
There's no confusion, Alderman. There's one petitioner, there's one thing in front of us. Contemplate the vacate as in front of you. If the parties wish to do something different after the council determines to vacate, so be it. If the council determines not to vacate, the matter's concluded.
Understood that. Okay, I guess I just have one more question for you, sir. You mentioned, when you spoke during the public hearing, you had no interest in spending any money on this property. So, the, I guess that ties in to what legal is saying too, which is, don't overcomplicate this, is essentially what you're saying, right? So, he doesn't want to spend any money, so if he does want to, he'll work that out with her after the fact, but then we still, okay. Let me back up on that, I guess, a little bit. Is there any additional legal expense for us if they come up with an alternate agreement after we vote tonight? So, we don't have to prepare two documents, we don't have to have two legal hearings, we don't, nothing like that, nothing at all?
Correct.
Okay, that's it for now, thank you.
Can someone, I'm sorry.
Come up to the podium, I want to ask you, then I'm going to recognize Alderman Mayor, but I want to make certain that we carefully consider your question or statement, so as not to, to borrow the words of Mr. Kassarag, complicate the matter. Yes, sir?
I'm not trying to complicate anything, the only thing, it was pointed out to me that, my understanding was that, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe I got it from you on a telephone conversation, that if it was to be vacated, the city would be responsible to offer it to both landowners, not just because Ann has pursued this. Was my understanding from Mr. DeGroot.
We're going to invite Mr. DeGroot to comment on that specifically, then we'll recognize Alderman Mayor.
The statute requires that we notify adjoining property owners, because if it is vacated, the only people that could benefit or take ownership of that property would be the adjacent property owners. So, that's the purpose for the public hearing, is if anybody else is interested, to come and voice that interest at the public hearing.
Thank you. Alderman Mayor?
I'm sorry, I still don't, I still don't understand what we do tonight. So, we have this vacation of Colony Drive in front of us, and it's for $3,500, and Ann Maron is the petitioner. And now, we have another party showing up that wants to be involved. Do we need to redraft this to include that? What is our legal responsibility for splitting the property? Or are we just vacating it tonight, and then they work out the division?
I don't believe we have to do anything else. If I heard the gentleman, the second time he spoke, I don't think he's made a commitment to make a financial contribution equal to Ms. Maron's, at least not at this time.
I don't understand why that has any significance.
Because that's the proposal that Ms. Maron has made.
But is Mr. DeGroot...
You're going to have to come up to the microphone, and let me summarize, and see if you understand this correctly too. Mr. Philipchuck made a statement during the public hearing, that he thought it best that, should you express interest in the property as well, and want to divide that property 50/50, it seems reasonable that you might provide for half the expenses, including, but not limited to, survey, legal fees, cost of land.
I understand all that, but I think we're muddying the waters here. My understanding from a member of the city of Geneva employee was stating that I have just as much right to this land as she does, even though she is the one asking for the vacation, vacancy of it.
Well, Ms. Maron has made a proposal for the whole at $3,500. That's her proposal. If you're willing to work with her on one half of that, that's between you and Ms. Maron. If you wish to make an offer on the whole or on half, you can do so, but that would be made to the city. But as I think I've made clear, we have one proposal, one petitioner right now.
Okay. So...
If your proposal is to take half for nothing, you can make that proposal. I think it would probably pale in comparison to what Ms. Maron has made, but that's not my decision.
Obviously. It's kind of putting me on the spot, because she's pursued this for quite some time, and now I'm finding out with, maybe a conversation a week ago with Mr. DeGroot, and now I'm finding out that I have to do this, that, or another thing. So, I guess to ease this and simplify it for everyone involved, I will just step out of it, forget that I was, that I'm interested. I was still understanding that the city was required to include me on half as notification,
because you're an adjoining owner, but not required to vacate anything to anybody. That includes Ms. Maron. You were notified because you are required as an adjoining property owner, and should you have an interest, you could express that interest. Ms. Maron has done so.
Okay, so what you're telling me is, if, right now, I should say I'm interested in obtaining half of it?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying you could, but we have one petition in front of us right now for the whole at $3,500, and she's expressed that in the form of a petition, and she's incurred professional fees to get to this point.
Yeah, but you're muddying the waters with...
I'm not.
Yes, you are, with what she's spent on pursuing this. I'm just to the understanding that I'm entitled to half of it if it gets vacated.
Sir, I can't be clearer, you're not entitled to half of it. You're entitled to notice to become a purchaser, if you wish to become a purchaser. If I live outside...
Okay, okay, okay. Well, let's simplify this for everyone.
One moment. Go ahead, Mr., go ahead, sir.
No, go ahead.
I was going to make a motion to, I'm sorry, I'm not the chair, so I can't be recognized, sorry.
Why don't you finish your thoughts? Alderman Mayor still has the floor.
I'll just make this easy for everyone. I'm not interested, I don't need it. If Ann has it, that's wonderful, I'll just step out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Mayor, the floor is still yours.
Well, I agree with Alderman Maladra, what you said earlier about the utility of the property, and that it doesn't bring any value to the city, and would not be able to be sold to any other parties. Therefore, I think that we should vote to approve this vacation to Ann Maron, who brought this forward, and honestly went through the trouble to do this, so. That's all.
Thank you. Alderman Burghart?
Thank you, ma'am.
Of course.
I just wanted to make a motion to postpone this matter until a date we can pick, but I just think there needs to be some clarity, and I would hate to vote on this tonight when we have a party who seems to be, did not understand exactly what his rights were in this situation.
I can accept that as a motion, if the alderwoman wishes to make that a formal motion.
Yes, I'd like to make a formal motion.
Is there a specific date you'd like to postpone to? A specific date would be required.
Whatever we'd need for...
Could certainly do it as early as the 24th, we could certainly do it not till February 7th. And what we do have available, that last Monday in January as well, which is the 31st, is that right? Or 30th? 31st.
I'm fine with January 24th, if we think that's enough time, that's just a week, next week.
Formal motion, Alderwoman Burghart?
Yes, if that date seems available, or if city staff thinks that date works for them.
There's a motion on the floor...
Second.
...to postpone this meeting, consideration thereof, vacating this parcel until January the 24th. It's seconded by Alderman Kassarag. In order for this motion to pass, a simple majority is required. Prior to taking the vote, however... Yes, Alderman Caven?
I want an opportunity to speak on the...
On the motion?
Yes, if we were going to have an opportunity to ask a question or speak on the amended motion.
Absolutely. I wanted to offer something as well, and I wanted the city attorney to clarify for me, and perhaps everybody else. Notification of property owners on either side of a considered vacated property is required by law. Does that notification also equate to those property owners automatically becoming petitioners on the issue?
The answer's no.
What requirements then are required of a property owner to become a, quote, certified petitioner of the issue?
They would need to avail themselves and seek to purchase the property and make a petition, and approach the city with an offer. The notification was simply that, a required statutory notification of adjoining property owners who could possibly be purchasers and have rights to vacate. Getting noticed doesn't mean you get something, it means nothing more than notice, and that's what we obviously undertook.
Alderman Caven, sir?
Thank you. I mean, I guess we can postpone this until next Monday, but based off of what we've just heard, the other party that was here tonight would have to petition themselves as well. So, if they don't wind up doing that, we're looking at the same exact thing seven days from now, and based off of what he indicated, I think he indicated that he doesn't want to spend any money. So, if we wait, and even if he petitions over the course of the next five or six days, which I don't know how likely that is, if his offer is zero, and we still have one that has an amount of money, and has gone through the legal work to get this done, I think it's most likely that we would probably still be looking at the same exact one next week as we are this week. So, I would vote against postponing the vote tonight. Thank you.
Comments regarding the matter to postpone? Alderman Maladra is recognized? Alderman Kilburg, next.
Mr. Durve did indicate that, to simplify things, he would just say he's not interested, but he also said that we're putting him on the spot, and he just heard about this a short time ago. So, I think that an additional period of time, so that you guys can discuss, and if they do come back and we're in the same place, and he says again he's not interested, I feel that it's a more informed decision than the decision made tonight, having been put on the spot. So, I think that for everybody's clarity, but also, you can tell me I'm wrong in a minute, also though, to make sure that you're comfortable with your decision, I would agree to postpone.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Kilburg, under you, sir. Alderman Kilburg, floor is yours.
You can come to the podium, I have a question of you.
This, no, this matter is only regarding the postponement, just as open as clear.
Right. Could you, because it's, there's a time consideration involved here, could you give me the date on the envelope that you received? The first or second notice? Well, what do you have with you there? The two letters that I received from the city. Okay. Let's see, the first one, December 10th, the second one, December 28th. And it was sometime between... Were they the same letter? Pretty much identical. Okay, so, you've had over 30 days to, I mean, since... First off, I believe you're wrong, well, you're correct in the dates, yes. I wasn't aware that I had the possible availability of any of this until talking with Mr. DeGroot, which would have been somewhere probably between the first and second date. Okay. And with talking to him, I was to the understanding that on the vacancy, it would be presented, it would be offered to, and/or either of us. But with all that said, let me simplify this and make it simple for everyone. I don't plan on pursuing this any farther. I would suggest, in my humble opinion, forget postponing it. Ann's done all the legwork, let her have it. Don't pursue this, it's going to cost her more money on legal fees to bring back her lawyer, be it a week or two weeks from now or whatnot. Good luck, let her have it, but pursue with her, forget I was here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Kilburg, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else from the dais? This is on the matter to postpone till January 24th. Simple majority, rules, Ms. Dawkins, when you have a moment, please take the role.
Caven?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Nay.
Marx?
Nay.
Mayor?
Mayor, nay.
Swanson?
Nay.
Burghart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Three to six.
Before the reading of the roll, I'd like to change my vote to a nay.
That is permissible for the reading of the roll?
And I would like to change mine to an aye. Sorry, I misunderstood, though.
You want it to a nay?
You voted aye.
You voted aye.
I want to postpone.
You voted aye to postpone.
Oh, good. And you're good. That's what I was like, okay.
So, Madam Recording Secretary, please read the totals.
Two in favor, seven opposed.
The motion to postpone fails.
Fails.
We're back to the main motion, ladies and gentlemen, to vacate the property at Colony Drive, located in the beautiful subdivision of West Haven. Manner, or, excuse me, questions or comments? Alderwoman Ruby?
Thank you. A new way to ask the same question. So, if we agree to sell the property, to vacate the property and sell it for, we'll say, $3,500, is Ms. Maron as the petitioner, is she the only eligible party to buy the property? I mean, it's not like if we approve the vacation of this land, that it would, it would go up for sale for $3,500, it would only be, she's the only eligible purchaser? Okay, thank you.
That is correct. The answer to that question is yes. Alderman Swanson, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with a lot of what Alderman Maladra said earlier, however, the piece that gives me a little pause is the offer amount. $3,500 is very low for vacant land in Geneva. I did a quick search of residential vacant land on the assessor's office, and there are numerous orphaned properties such as this that are out there. Some of them are even accessible only by crossing a road, so, as opposed to being contiguous. For example, there's a 7,800 square foot, which is valued, 7,800 parcel, which is valued at $22,000. There's a 6,500 square foot parcel valued at $11,000, two more 7,800 parcels for $22,000. There's a 6,500 square foot parcel valued at $11,000, two more 7,800 parcels for $22,000. So what this tells me is 3,500 is woefully low, given a 6,000 square foot property. So I'm uncomfortable with the purchase price, I would prefer that it be higher. Just for reference point, there is a $2,200 small parcel, it's valued at 2,200, it generates property taxes annually of $60 total. So the Geneva portion of that would be 6% of $60. So the dollar amount seems inadequate, in my opinion, so I would prefer to see a higher amount, more commensurate with what other residential vacant land is valued at in Geneva. Thank you.
If I may, a question, a follow-up to Alderman Swanson, that those other parcels, are we the owners of those parcels?
That's it.
Is the city of Geneva the owner?
No, they are not. They are parcels owned by residents.
Okay.
In Allendale, on Western Avenue, all of, various orphaned properties that have been sold to neighbors. So they're vacant residential properties, owned by individuals.
Sold to neighbors by whom?
That, I can't, I don't know who sold them. Some of them had sales prices, many of them went back to 1987 or 2005, so it...
Could have been sold by the developer...
Or the railroad, or who knows.
Railroad or whomever, okay. From the dais, anyone else? Alderman Berger, Alderman Maladra.
Thank you, Mayor. Following up on Alderman Ruby's point, and I'm sure this has been told to us, but, so why are the contiguous, the neighboring properties the only ones that can, so somebody in that neighborhood, now that we're gonna vacate, couldn't say, hey, I'd love that for a T-ball lot for my kids and purchase it? Is that under, that's under state law that gives us the ability to vacate and then sell only, or offer it for sale to one of the neighboring properties?
Yes, that is a state statute.
Okay. And behind this property is just the church, and they have no interest in it? They'd be the third that would have to, were notified, is that right?
They were not notified because they're not, they're not adjoining, they were the right-of-way would go into, so they're not currently, we wouldn't consider them adjoining property owners.
And their definition of adjoining property is captured within the statute? Yes?
We, yes, yeah.
Yes.
I don't know the physical landscape.
I mean, I don't have the player...
They vacated it, and it's like a 30-foot drop, there's nothing you can do behind there. It's like a huge hill.
Along of the gas line, what is the adjacent property?
Sir? Alderman Berger still has the floor.
I have another question, but I can, well, my, I would say I'm on the same page as Alderman Swanson, I'm struggling with the amount of this, the $3,500 seems awful low. Thank you.
Alderman Maladra, then Kilburg.
So, again, I said earlier in my comments, I'm sure that we could find an assessor to put a dollar amount on this property, and Alderman Swanson did. But that doesn't get to the utility of the property to either us or to the applicant. Fact is, to us, the property adds zero value. So for us to sit back and insist because someone has shown interest in it, that that interest is only valid if it comes with a price tag that some other construct thinks is fair, doesn't make sense to me. To my way of thinking, anything over zero is fair, because this is not an asset to the city of Geneva. The purpose we purchased it for doesn't exist anymore, and since 1992, we have not thought of anything that we would rather do with a property of this size. So to insist on a high price seems to me to be saying, we have something you want, you know, pay up, and I just don't see that as the true value of the property, to us. Thank you.
Alderman Kilburg, sir?
I don't have a question.
Alderman Kasserag, sir?
If, what I understood a little bit, I think when Director DeGroot spoke a little earlier, or maybe it was you, Mayor, the plat of survey in our packet is not up to date in terms of the easements that we would require, is that correct? Because that only had one easement, I believe, on the church side of the property.
That's correct. We've had some back and forth with the petitioner, they are willing to grant the easements that are required. They've gone as far as drafting those easements for our review, we just wanted them to get that resolved by this evening.
Would it be possible for you to pull that up from the packet, I don't want to put you on the spot presentation-wise, and just sort of point out with the mouse where those new easements are?
I don't have that in the packet, I might have a hard copy with me, I could pass around.
Ms. Dawkins can pull it up, Mr. DeGroot. We're gonna lose Amy, perhaps, or, excuse me, Alderman Mayor, but...
Just the math, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. Hold on one second.
So the one in the packet won't contain the easements?
The one that came via email today?
Yes, that does, there you go.
Can you...
I can probably rotate it if we need to.
It's on the screen. Alderman Kasserag has the floor.
So the gray area is obviously the easements, and...
This part?
Yep.
And I apologize for the angle, I don't know how to flip it right now.
Is it normal for there to be that big of an easement on the street yard, street side of the property?
In portions of this subdivision, we do have that 20-foot easement, and in other portions, it's down to 10 feet. Here you have a sanitary line that kind of starts at the, towards Lot 19, and cuts across towards Lot 18, so it is necessary to have a larger easement there, as the sanitary sewer cuts across. On the west property line, you have, I think it was a 12-inch water main, and then on the south property line, you have electric cables, and that's where any other utilities like AT&amp;T and Comcast would be as well.
Okay. And the petitioner is fine with the new easements as drawn, and, or you actually drew, had them drawn yourself?
Yes, we're comfortable, we didn't realize that that would be the need, but it came up just recently, and so we said, sure, we can accommodate that. David was very good about giving me the information on what was there, because I had the same question, 20-foot easement on the front, because Anne's is only 10. And so when he described the fact of how that sanitary sewer line kind of went cattywampus across the frontage, I guess it makes sense. The one thing about the value, I think it's important to note that the city didn't buy this lot, you paid zero for it, okay? It was donated by the developer and dedicated as a public right-of-way, it just never got used, so you're not out any money. In fact, it's a liability to you, because if the neighbors stopped maintaining it, guess who's gonna pay to maintain it? You're gonna have to send crews out there every week, cut the grass, do whatever you gotta do to it. So, you know, you haven't had that liability all these years, but it would come to that if, if we can't come to a agreement on this, I, you know, they certainly could say, well, okay, city, you know, go ahead, keep it, maintain it, please, because, you know, you haven't had to do that. So from that standpoint, you know, it certainly makes sense, and if Anne decides that she wants to put an addition on her home, you could increase the tax revenue to the municipality if she does that, if she puts a larger home on there and adds this property to her current lot, not that the, just addition of the lot would increase the value, probably wouldn't do very much if at all, but if she decided to put a pool over there, or expand her home on the property, then certainly there would be a higher assessed valuation with that. So that is something to consider that could happen, whether it be Anne or a subsequent owner someday.
It was actually, if you don't mind, or Ms. Maron, if you want to talk through the lawyer, that's fine, too, but, not to put you on the spot, not required answer, but is there any plans to do this, or, I guess, why, what I've been wondering so much is, why now? Like, it's been so many years, it's literally been decades, and part of me is just like, why, why at this moment did you decide to petition the city for this? After all those years, you must have been frustrated cutting lawns?
No.
That's not yours 15 years ago.
David, the Dervays and I, great neighbors, we've both raised our children in the area. I bought my lot in 93, so it's always come up once the church, you know, it's that Chapel Street Church, it was First Baptist, when they bought the property, what's, you know, we just did the right thing as, you know, homeowners and took care of it. I mean, between lawn service, as well as even snow removal, I did talk to Amy about there's a pumping station also in West Haven, or there's like a little, I don't know what it is, I honestly don't, but our kids walk to Heartland School, and we have dozens of children that walk there, that's never shoveled, and I wouldn't think to do that. So we've shoveled that drive, that walkway for, you know, for all these years, because it's the right thing to do for the kids in our neighborhood. But I'll tell you right now, my children are grown and raised, and I'm happy, and they're, so I think why now is, if I considered moving or selling my house in the next five years, I'm not saying it's tomorrow, but I am looking at that, like, this is something, a change for me that's happening, and that's a number one question that has come up, like, what's with that land, what's going on, or would you do an addition, you know, like, or, there is no plans other than at some point, this has to be resolved, you know, and I just, you know, we, I've talked to Dave about it a number of times, and, you know, we, it was just like, well, why bother, why, it wasn't urgent to me, I had other priorities, I was doing my job and raising my kids, and it wasn't like, I'm not going anywhere, but now I look at my horizon, you know, what's my short-term plan, and I think that would be something that if I sold my home, that somebody could say, oh, cool, we could do a built-in pool. I mean, these are all ideas that I don't know, I don't know what someone wants to do, it's not like I'm gonna put a pool in it tomorrow, you know, but it's usable property or usable land, that, you know, that's, that's pretty much it. It's something we've discussed for a number of times, and every time I came, you know, like, it was, it was just delayed, 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 it was never, you know, so finally, I just, you know, I think it was last year, to be honest with you, you know, I had a discussion, I, we had another neighbor that just moved in that said, hey, I'd like to buy that property, I'd like to build a band cave or a garage on there, and I'm like, oh, you know, I mean, I, like, I didn't, that kind of worried me, like, is that something that somebody else could all of a sudden state claim on it? I don't know legally, so that's why I took an interest and really said to myself, we need to find out. I, I mean, someone was joking, like, whatever they can do with it, I don't know that there, like, there would be much, you know, to do with it otherwise. So, so, yeah.
Great.
That's, that's my reason, so thank you, yes, I, you know, John's great, I think he kind of really got the ball moving, because I've come to the city a number of times, I have a document with me that was from the city from 2006, so quite literally, the year after the church bought the property, we were addressing this, and as Dave said, and Alderman, I don't know how many years ago, Dorothy, she's, you know, we've, we've discussed this before, and we've, you know, and like we said, like, all right, just, you know, do something, but nobody seemed to want to get something done. So I appreciate your consideration and really hope that, you know, I mean, we'll just, you know, get this, you know, resolved one way or another, so, thank you again.
That was very, very helpful, I really appreciate that, Ms. Maron, understanding the background and where that all came from, so. I guess just one technical question I have, is, as I looked today, there's no PIN, obviously, why would there be a proper identification number for a street? So does it get incorporated into, should it pass, into her own property? Or is it a separate now PIN that somehow gets marketed in addition to her house? Say she sells in five years, like she just said, is it one PIN or is it two PINs?
Well, I would recommend to my client that she would approach the tax assessor's office and have it combined as to one parcel, that would be my recommendation, now she could, if she wants to pay a separate tax bill for that parcel that's only used for cutting grass, then, that's up to her, but my recommendation would be to have it put together with the other parcel as one.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for now, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Caven, sir?
Thank you. So there's only two people that could potentially purchase this property, right? So there isn't anybody else to find or locate for a better offer. I don't think that the city's getting any utility from it at the present time, it was something that was donated, it can't be sold separately, there can't be another structure that's put on there, and this person has also maintained and paid for with the addition of the, of the neighbor as well, for about 25 years. So I don't think that there is anything that we could, the city could physically do with it, so I would rather not have to deal with this portion any longer and worry about the potential liability to the city as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. On the main motion, ladies and gentlemen, Alderwoman Berger.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Caven said the offer, I think, use the word offer, and again, that's what's, I'm stumbling at, is, how did that offer of $3,500 get determined, is that what Ms. Maron...
They, I was told administrative costs, or fees that the city needed to recoup.
Mr. Philipchuk or Ms. Maron, forgive me, but please come to the podium, but Ms. Maron's statement is correct, it was a determinate amount based on administrative fees, what have you?
I, we were told that whatever, I mean, I've been taking, like, the, what's that Ron guy, I mean, the plat of survey and stuff like that, I've been paying, the surveyor and stuff like that, so what would be the fees to take care of this for the administrative cost for the city? And that's how it was determined, with the assistance of the attorney I hired, because I'm not an expert. I just, I really didn't know, I said, what would be a reasonable, you know, for that type of processing? Okay, and I do appreciate all that you and your neighbor have done, yard work's no joke, so I appreciate all that you've done over the years, all right, well, thank you.
Can that, can I share that? Correct, okay. Alderman Kilburg, sir?
So you're saying someone gave you that figure to work with? Essentially, that's what you've said, that the $3,500 was not your determination, it was someone else's determination, that $3,500 would have been, it would be an acceptable number.
If I may...
I mean, that's, that's what she said, right?
It, but, but, well, I think that's what's being interpreted as...
Let her answer.
Well, no, hold on, let me answer.
Oh, well...
I think that's being interpreted as what Ms. Maron said, but the reality is, ladies and gentlemen of the council, you will recall, the original offer is $2,500, this council said, no, that's not good enough. We received, the city, a phone call from Ms. Maron's attorney, Mr. Philipchuk, who said, we will go to $3,500 and not a penny more, I relayed that information, well, we relayed that information to all of you, and here we are tonight. So I don't, there was no, there was, there was nobody on staff who said, offer this or anything like that, but...
Well, that's not my saying, but somehow we got to the number of $3,500, and it wasn't, wasn't your, it's not what you'd offered, it was what you felt was the going price for the parcel.
So what is your question, I apologize?
I'm just saying, how did you arrive at, first of all, $2,500, and then at $3,500, I can understand what the mayor explained, but I guess I don't understand how we got to $2,500.
Similar to what my neighbor was saying, we have felt that no cost should be incurred, but then, I think, because I have incurred the cost of having an attorney and saying that there are administrative fees and so, because I offered $2,500, I'll tell you how I came to it, I added up 20-some years, I employ, I don't do it myself, sorry, I employ a landscaper, so I've got bills, you know, JR's landscaping, I've had Spring Green that does it, I've had Air Raiding, so if you were to look at, when you say, a set amount of property, I mean, look at my house or whatever, if you saw that placed on there, that whole lot, they, they give me quotes for maintaining that land based on that square footage, and I've been doing it for 20-plus years, so I said, well, who's gonna pay me my, you know, like, you said it was 45 or $46,000, I kind of laughed and was upset, saying... I kind of laughed and was upset, saying, well, it's cost me, you know, $40,000. I mean, I mean, for, for 20-some years of maintaining the land between both of us or whatever, we've had expenses. So I said, that was outrageously expensive. So yes, I came with, what is it gonna, you know, what, what reasonable offer would allow this transfer in all of our time and energy? And so I offered $2,500 and you guys said no. So I'm like, okay, so with my attorney's counsel, that's kind of like, he's like, this is it. You know, like, this is what we should, you know, this is, this is what he, it's fair. And he's done research. He's done taking a look at it. Like I said, we've looked, there's no other property in the city of Geneva that is like similar like that. It's very different than those other examples that, you know, Mr. Swanson has, has, you know, proposed. And like I said, I, I just feel that I want to do the right thing. I just want to, you know, be recognized that something, the city shouldn't just let this be no man's land. We, we need to try to, you know, just get it resolved and I want to do it fairly. But I'm also realistic to say, I'm willing to pay a certain amount of money. I mean, I've, and why did I do it now? My kids are graduated from college. I didn't have the money, you know, before. So I'm like, you know, I, like, it's, it's not something I pursued because it wasn't of high importance to me. But now I feel like it needs to just, you know, you know, come to a conclusion. So I'm sorry. I, I don't have a, you know, a documentation of.
You know, I think you've given a, an explanation. I guess a couple of other things. Did you ever contact the city about the maintenance of that property? I think there's an, there's an easement, sidewalks, an easement in front of my house. And I got a corner lot. And I shovel the sidewalk in the winter because I have kids that go to school. Now, I do that voluntarily. I don't expect anybody to pay me to do that. And there are other sidewalks in the immediate area that I also shovel and maintain. And I've lived there for 35 years and I've done it. And I don't, I don't expect anything or any benefit from it. I, I guess I'm surprised that over the last, roughly 25 years, you didn't call the city and say, this is your property, why don't you maintain it? I think I would have done that.
Well, okay.
I mean, I think maybe the city wasn't doing it to your satisfaction.
No, they've never done it. I'll be very clear and Mr. Dur, you know.
The city owned it, I think, over 25 years, I might have gotten on the phone and said, would you send a detail out here this year to, to cut the grass and maintain it? Now, there are some parcels in Geneva, maybe where we don't do it at a level that the neighbors feel is acceptable.
Well, I guess I'm not sure really what the point, because honestly, when we, many, many years ago, Dave had suggested, or the Durveys, Eric just said, you know, we've talked to the alderman, just stop mowing it. I, I, I had, I felt I didn't want it to, you know, it's a beautiful neighborhood. I, I wanted to, you know, like, it, to me, it was the right thing to do. Did, I mean, am I, I mean, maybe I should have been a squeaky wheel. I don't, I don't know, I don't have an answer for why I didn't pursue it before. It was just something to maintain it, to maintain the beauty of the neighborhood. That was it. I mean, quite, I have no other reason.
I'm sure your neighbors in the city appreciates it.
I hope so. I, you know.
But I guess to feel as though we have an obligation to you as a result of that, I just, I, it's appreciated. It's appreciated, but I just don't think that that should enter into the discussion.
And please, no, it wasn't my intention to say an obligation. I'm just saying it, it was just something that was done in good faith or the right thing to do. And so I, I think it's just as outrageous to come up with a land value that really is just not justified. And, and again, that's not just my opinion. That's through, I, I mean, I've hired an attorney that, he's, you know, specific for real estate. So I'm sitting here going like, I, I, I take his advice or his counsel. What do you think would be fair? So that's what we determined.
What I'm saying, though, is it's been referenced about four or five times that you've maintained it with your neighbor for 25 years. Well, my question is, why did you do that? And if it was out of the goodness of your heart, fine. But the thing to come back now and say, well, I should be compensated with a, a low price on this property as a result of it, I think is, is, presents a little bit of a, a challenge to me to all process. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
From the dais. Alderman Marks, sir?
Mayor, I guess my, my understanding of what the true value of the property is, is what a willing buyer is to pay for it and a willing seller is to sell for it. That's up to this council. If, if, if we feel $3,600 is too low, we should vote no. If we feel it's fair, we should vote yes. I mean, that's, that's the true, true valuation, willing buyer, willing seller. And if we're not willing to sell for $3,600, which I do think is low, you vote no. That's where it really comes into play. And that's how I sum it up. And what the real value is, I don't know without an appraiser. And, you know, I still feel we have some fiduciary duty as representatives of the whole community to really get a feel for what that is. I don't know if an appraisal is the right, you're right, Craig, it's gonna be a dart on the wall, but $3,600 just seems low for me. And as a willing seller, that's too low and I'm not willing to sell it for that. So that, that's just my feelings.
Not to disappoint, but it's actually $3,500. So it's a hundred bucks.
Sorry. Okay.
Alderman Maladra, sir?
So if, if what you're saying is, you know, the members of this council can vote as they see fit, I don't disagree with that. But the value of the property, so let's say that we decide not to vacate. Okay, so great, we're sitting on this property. You're not gonna maintain it anymore. Not that that's a huge cost in, in a city budget, but still, it's, it's a, it's a cost to take care of it. And what value do we accrue from it? Okay, you, you understand, you know, so, I don't know, warehouse space is valuable because you can store things there. You know, basement space is valuable because you can kick your teenagers down there. Since 1992, we have not accrued any value from this property. And I would submit that we don't intend to. And, and so rather than look at cost, which to us was zero, I would say, let's look at the value that we're getting. The, the whole discussion about where did $2,500 come from, it's the same thing that we're doing. We're pointing to a number in some appraisers booklet and saying it's worth $46,000. Based on what? Based on what we get out of it? There is no value to us. And if we want to, we can, we can stand firm. We can, we can pat ourselves on the back and say, we did well. We held on to this property. But, but in terms of dollars, that's gonna do nothing for us. In terms of, people on the council like to talk about optics. In terms of goodwill, it's gonna be a negative for us. So I, I really just don't see the benefit to the city of holding on for whatever you want to call top dollar on this. There's only two property owners who can buy it. One's not interested. One's been taking care of it for 20-some years. Whether we asked them to or not, last week, we talked about another institution that took care of some of our property for us, as if that was a good thing for us. So what you have done is a good thing for us. So, you know, in, in terms of standing firm, this is not the battle that I would choose to stand that firm on.
From the dais, ladies and gentlemen. Alderman Mayor, floor is yours.
Yeah, I would just echo what Alderman Maladra said and say that, you know, we could make a stand here. We could, we could say that it's not enough. We could worry about slippery slopes. But really, Ann Maron's been a good citizen of Geneva and she's bringing out forward an offer that we would not even known about. We would not be here today trying to sell the property if she hadn't brought it forward because the city was just not tuned in to the fact that we own this property at all to be able to vacate it. So I, I really hope that my fellow council people will, will vote for this and we can just dispense with this matter. Seems like a lot of trouble for something that's not worth anything to the city. Is only worth something to this property owner that wants to pay for it.
Anyone else on the dais?
That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Mayor. Alderman Kocarog.
Uh, I think just as my final comments, I was, I was coming in here tonight and I really didn't know what to do with this. And I'm really glad we heard that story from Ms. Maron because it, it kind of puts it in perspective for me, rather than just a plot of land and a, and a number for the city. I, I'm persuaded that there is no real value to the city, that we wouldn't have even known about it, as Alderman Mayor just said. The potential tax benefit for the city being on the books, should it be improved on? And I, I would even submit that the goodwill that she did is even more valuable than the mowing and the shoveling that she did over all those years, making it safe for children going down the street, making it a beautiful neighborhood for the neighbors and the neighborhood and the city of Geneva. Actually, is beyond the money that she spent doing it. It's the willingness to spend that money is even greater. And so I, I'm persuaded that we, we should vote yes on this ordinance and, and vacate this land and, and sell it to Ms., to Ms. Maron. Thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Just to clarify, ladies and gentlemen, the motion on the table is to vacate the right-of-way located in West Haven, Colony Drive, subject to final legal review. All easements as purportedly agreed to between the petitioner, city attorney. And let me also add, prior to taking the vote, this does require a three-quarter affirmative vote to pass this resolution. And I have the pleasure and opportunity to vote as well. Three-quarters means eight members of the council and myself. Pardon me? And the amount is $3,500?
Sorry.
Before we take the vote, any questions regarding? If not, Ms. Dawkins?
Kilberg?
Nay.
Kocarog?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marks?
Nay.
Mayor?
Aye. Mayor, aye.
Swanson?
Nay.
Burkhart?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Mayor? No, the mayor.
The mayor, sorry. Aye.
Seven to three.
Regrettably, ladies and gentlemen, this matter fails because the final vote was seven in the affirmative, three in the negative. I will defer to the city attorney as to what, if anything, is next or what could be next. Could the petitioner repetition as early as?
Yeah, I have to research when a new matter could be brought.
Mr. Philipchuk, we'll have a city attorney reach out to you with respect to.
If, if the council members that voted. If the council members that voted no have a different number in mind that's, that's reasonable, that she could agree to, give it to us. You know? If, if that, if that would take care of it.
I'd be reluctant to negotiate price, but I would offer this if anyone's interested who is in the losing side of this proposition. The losing side are?
It's actually the prevailing side.
The prevailing side. The prevailing side was the three aldermen who voted in the negative. If any of those aldermen wish to offer a motion to reconsider, that certainly is a possibility. And the chair would entertain such a motion.
What you're, what you're saying, Mayor? I mean, reconsider it tonight or?
Absolutely. It's permissible.
Renegotiate the contract? Contract out in, in public or just?
No, 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 no. It was, it would be a motion to reconsider the matter for a continuous debate, discussion, and then a vote again. Now, during that discussion, if someone wanted to throw out a different amount, you could certainly do so, but it would bring the matter back to the floor. If not, then we just simply move on. I wanted to provide everyone and anyone, all opportunities to do so, should they see fit. Otherwise, we'll require city attorney Sandak to consult with city attorney, or excuse me, to Mr. Philipchuk and proceed accordingly, whatever that accordingly is. The chair determines there is no interest in a motion to reconsider, we will move on the agenda, folks. Ladies and gentlemen, bear with me as I entertain a motion to recess the city council. Whoop. Oh, forgive me, forgive me. We're gonna entertain new business and public comment, public comment. Anyone joining us this evening in the audience wish to speak, offer? Yes, welcome. And thank you for your patience. I'm sensing a red sweater here. Is this a?
Thank you so very much.
How are you?
My name is Lauren Maxwell.
Hi, Lauren.
I am here from the Geneva Public Library. I see a handful of red sweaters as well. I'm very excited to talk to you all tonight and the red tie.
That's the closest I got. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you to Ben, who is handing out some giveaways. But we are starting a one-book, one-community program series at the Geneva Library. Our kickoff event will be on January 30th. We are inviting author Tim Madigan to come in and talk to us about his personal relationship with Fred Rogers, who is the subject of the book that Ben has handed to you all. And we are very excited to offer a series of events over the next month that appeal to all ages and interests with the theme of Mr. Rogers and the legacy he left behind of kindness and community and neighborliness and wonderment and learning. So with generous sponsorships from our friends of the Geneva Library, we have thus far given away about 600 books. Wow. To Geneva community members over the last several weeks. There are still a handful left at the library, if anybody is interested in a copy. But there are many more copies available for checkout with your library card. We are encouraging everybody to read this book if you have young people in your lives. We have also provided a copy of Who Was Mr. Rogers from the famous Who Was book series. And that is available for children as well. So we are just really excited to learn more about Fred Rogers. We are really excited to share with some really fun events over the next month or so. There is an event flyer tucked in inside each of your books in the front cover. So I wanted to bring your attention to just a few things that are in there. First is our kickoff event, which I mentioned. Second, we are having additional authors, Greg Baer and Ryan Rzuski, who wrote the book, When You Wonder Your Learning. It is about raising kids in the digital age with curiosity and kindness and wonderment. So we are very excited to invite them. On February 23rd, we are also doing a community book discussion on February 25th. The mayor is one of our celebrity guests at that community book discussion. We would love to have as many community members as possible participate. And then our finale event will be on February 27th, which is a Sunday afternoon. We are doing a neighborhood festival. And our showcase for that event is going to be of all of our community helpers. Mr. Rogers was always very excited to share what everybody does to help their local communities. So we are inviting many of the people that run Geneva and keep the wheels going to our community helper showcase so that we can appreciate all of the work that they do. So we hope that you guys will all stop by and have some good times at our Mr. Rogers-themed events. And come to our discussions and just engage with the community in this big discussion about what it is to be a community and what it is to be good neighbors.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments for Ms. Maxwell? And what is your role of the library? Because obviously, there's such a little passion there. It's like extraordinary.
Yes, I am the Information and Reader Services Coordinator.
Wow.
Which is a little bit of a mouthful, but it essentially means that. Which is a little bit of a mouthful, but it essentially means that I, uh, coordinate services to adults within the library.
That's cool. Very cool. Anyone? Yes, Alderwoman Ruby, then Alderman Kocrag?
Thank you. Uh, thank you to the library for doing this. Um, I picked up a copy, um, of this book and my daughter, she's in third grade, she, she read her copy, um, in one sitting. She opened up the book and she did not move until she finished the book.
Oh, that's so exciting.
Yeah, it was really cool. Yeah. And then, um, I just wanted to share briefly, when I opened the book, I, I read this out loud to my family because I just thought it was awesome. It's a quote by Fred Rogers, "There are three ways to ultimate success. The first way is to be kind. The second way is to be kind. The third way is to be kind." I just loved that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kocrag?
Uh, I have, uh, kind of a selfish question. Uh, are there happen to be any versions available for online reading for my Kindle?
Oh, yes. There is a bookmark tucked inside your book. If you have your Geneva Library card, you can check out a digital copy, uh, either a reading copy, an ebook copy, or an audiobook copy through our Hoopla service.
Great.
Uh, the audiobook is read by none other than LeVar Burton of the Reading Rainbow fame. So, it's a really excellent listen as well as an excellent read.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you for what you do for the library and, and for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderwoman Burkhardt?
Thank you. I'm really excited to read this. I am like the Fred Rogers generation, born in seventy-two, so Sesame Street and Fred Rogers were right, I was right there at the beginning. Um, I went to brag, I got to go to the Heinz Museum in Pittsburgh this summer where they have almost a whole floor devoted to Fred Rogers, and they have the original sets from, um, his show and the train and the puppets and a lot of his original sweaters. And I learned that the first sweaters he wore on his show were knit by his mom. And so, as those worn out, the production team was kind of challenged to like find sweaters that looked lived in and homey, and I thought that was really neat. I got a little teary-eyed maybe seeing the exhibit, so I'm really excited about this.
I'm so glad to hear it. Visiting that museum in Pittsburgh is on my bucket list.
Anyone else?
If I just wanted to add and just appreciate Lauren coming down here tonight.
Absolutely.
The library has been a terrific partner with Strategic Plan Advisory Committee and SPACE and the invitation to, um, share information about this within the, um, share information about this exciting program and the planning of it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Lauren, if you could, stick around for just a couple more moments, okay?
Sure thing.
Okay. Any new business from anyone else in the audience regarding anything? Anyone online? Ms. McLeary, Ms. Dawkins?
No.
Oh, yes, sir. Check this out. Mr., hold, I got it, Dervay.
You got it.
See? I put it phonetically.
Um, I'm just going to assume something here for a moment, and, uh, who, who should we be reaching into city to start maintaining this property in the spring?
I will make a note of that.
Uh, do we not know who I should be contacting?
Oh, yes. You can contact Director of Public Works, Mr. Babica, six-three-zero-two-three-two-one-five-zero-one.
One-five-zero-one. And to my understanding, he would then be responsible for mowing and mulching the tree line that's on the southern portion of it also?
He will provide the services as stipulated through the, um, codes within our.
And not to quote Bible verses here, but do you off the top, does anyone off the top of their head know the, um, city ordinance that requires how high the lawn needs to be before it needs to be mowed?
Cannot eat, cannot exceed eight inches.
Do you, I understand that. Do you know what the ordinance is?
Oh, the actual number of the ordinance?
Yes.
I do not, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. Come to the podium. Welcome.
I'm one of the neighbors in West Haven. We would also need to know when we have snow, who at the city we call to have them come and do in that, do that walkway.
Shovel that walk. I will reach out.
Pardon?
Um, well, Ms. Dawkins, do you want to comment on that? Because I, I mean, I certainly can, but we do not shovel sidewalks. City staff do not shovel sidewalks unless said sidewalks are within a, what we call a special service area, where those, the businesses of that special service area pay additional fee on their taxes to have that service provided.
We, as it stands now.
No, I know.
We do it.
Go ahead, chime in then.
We're the ones who shovel.
We are in a special service assessment.
Right, but your SSA is, uh, likely for the detention ponds and not for sidewalk maintenance. It's, it's only the.
So, you're saying the city doesn't shovel their own sidewalk?
We do not shovel sidewalks. The adjacent property owners.
They're all on their sidewalk?
That's correct. The adjacent property owners are responsible if they want the sidewalks shoveled.
Anyone else on anything from the dais about anything?
I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to beat it that hard.
No, it's all good.
If, if, if the city doesn't shovel their own sidewalk, who, who does the, I've seen the city, uh, snow removal equipment on the sidewalks throughout town down Main Street.
That's in SSA number one, which that is specifically spelled out in the SSA, that it is for snow removal of sidewalks.
So, the SSA that we're in doesn't cover that?
Does not, does not cover si- snow removal.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please bear with me. I'm going to, uh, entertain a motion to recess the city council meeting, and I'm doing so in the spirit of trying to hopscotch over some technological challenges and not asking people to vacate the meeting now so we can go into closed session. So, here's what's going to happen. I'm going to entertain a motion to recess the council meeting until the conclusion of the committee of the whole meeting. Upon conclusion of the committee of the whole meeting, I will entertain a motion to, quote, "return from recess to the city council meeting to handle the closed session and pending litigation." So, with that, may I entertain a motion to recess the city council meeting until the conclusion of the committee of the whole meeting this evening. Alderman Marx makes that motion.
Second.
Alderman Kocrag makes the second. Everyone clear? A simple voice vote is sufficient? Or would you prefer?
Yeah.
All in favor of recessing the meeting until the conclusion of the committee of the whole meeting later on this evening, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, aye.
Mayor, aye. Anyone opposed? We are in recess, ladies and gentlemen. Just give us a minute to switch over a couple things here.
All right. Good evening. Um, my name's Craig Maladra. I'm an alderman from the Fifth Ward. Uh, privilege I share with Alderman Swanson. Um, and tonight, this is the committee of the whole meeting, uh, for January eighteenth. I'll let the record show, all members are present save for Alderman Bruno. Um, item two of the agenda allows me to do this. Um, recommend suspending the rules to permit Alderman Maladra to be the committee of the whole chairman for the meeting and to vote on all action items on this agenda.
Motion.
Thank you, Alderman Swanson. Second, Alderman Marx. Uh, voice vote, good?
Voice vote works.
Voice vote is fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, aye.
Just checking. Okay. Item number three, approve the committee of the whole minutes from December sixth, twenty-twenty-one. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes, please?
So moved.
Alderman Kocrag, second?
Give me a second.
Okay.
It's too fast.
Try to keep up. Um, okay, all in favor of approving the minutes? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. On to items of business. Item four A, consider draft resolution authorizing a declaration of surplus equipment and office furniture. Alderman Marx?
Second.
Alderman Burkhardt, thank you. Any questions? Oops, sorry.
This one, again, is pretty self-explanatory. Housekeeping, declaring, uh, various office furniture and equipment as surplus.
Now, do we have any questions? Nope. All right. Um, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Nope. Oh, Alderman Mayor, thank you. Uh, item four B, consider draft resolution waiving competitive bidding and awarding a labor contract for pre-chamber upgrade at the Geneva Generation Facility to Altorfer Caterpillar in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars and ninety-five cents. Can I have a motion? Alderman Marx, a second?
Second.
Alderman Ruby, thank you very much.
Okay, so the pre-check, the pre-chamber check valve installation requires expertise in the disassembly and reassembly of the cylinder heads on the engines at the GGF. Altorfer Caterpillar is the local dealer that supports the engines installed, and they have helped support maintenance on the engines in the past, and staff has been satisfied with the quality of their work. Um, as this is a waiver of bidding, it does require seven affirmative votes for passage. However, this is a cow, so it's just a majority to move it to the city council meeting. Um, but at the council meeting, it would need seven affirmative votes. I do have Superintendent Holton with us if there are any additional questions.
Do we have any questions? All right, no questions. There's a voice vote. A voice vote is sufficient here again. Um, so, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four C, consider draft resolution authorizing the purchase of Hearst rescue tools from Air One Equipment in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. Alderman Swanson, do we have a second? Alderman Marx, thank you.
Okay, so as contemplated in the fiscal year twenty-two budget, this request is to purchase a replacement set of Hearst hydraulic rescue tools for Fire Truck Two-O-One from Air One Equipment, Inc. of South Elgin. The existing tools have reached end of life and are increasingly more difficult to get repaired. There's only one quote presented as the, uh, Hearst maintains the exclusive territorial distributorship in the United States. So, similar to the last item, this would require seven affirmative votes for passage, but again, just for the cow, uh, simple majority works. And I do have Chief Antonori present if you would like to know any more information.
All right. Have we got any questions about item four C? Okay. Uh, hearing none, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, aye.
Mayor, aye. All right, passes unanimous. Um, four D, consider draft ordinance abating the tax levied for the payments due under the terms of a certain ordinance providing for the issuance of ten million, eight-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars in general obligation refunding bonds, uh, waterworks and sewage alternative revenues, uh, Series Twenty-Twenty-One, City of Geneva, County of Kane, et cetera. Um, do I have a motion?
So.
Alderman Burkhardt, second by Alderman Marx.
So, the city annually abates taxes for various bond issues using water and wastewater revenues mainly comprised of user fees. This annual process removes the debt service payments from the property tax bill and requires that the bonds are paid for by the user fees collected in the Water Sewer Fund. For fiscal year twenty-three, the amount is one million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, thirty-four dollars related to the Twenty-Twenty-One General Obligation Refunding Bond, Series Twenty-Twenty-One. Uh, we do have Director Cruz with us if there are any additional questions, or if you want her to read that entire motion.
All right. Do we have any questions about item four D? Anybody want me to read the whole thing? Okay. All right, no questions. Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes. Item four E, consider draft ordinance authorizing Northern Illinois Gas Company doing business as Nikor Gas Company to construct, operate, and maintain a gas distributing system in and through the city of Geneva. Do I have a motion? So moved. Alderman Kocrag, any second? Alderman Kilberg, thank you.
Okay, so Northern Illinois Gas Company, also doing business as Nikor Gas, is a duly authorized holder of a franchise with the city of Geneva, authorizing Nikor to construct, operate, and maintain a gas distribution system in and through the city of Geneva. The original grant of the franchise commenced in nineteen-fifty-six, and the most recent franchise agreement expired in July of twenty-twenty-one. The agreement protects the interests of the city for a period of thirty years. The terms and conditions of the franchise agreement remain substantially the same as the previous one, and in consideration for the franchise agreement, Nikor will either provide an amount of natural gas billing each year without charge to the city, or alternatively, the city may select to receive an annual cash payment in lieu of the gas benefit. Upon approval by the city council, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect retroactive to July second, twenty-twenty-one. Um, and if you have any additional questions, I'm here for you.
Stephanie, I just have, do we usually take the, the, the gas or do we?
So, we've been taking the gas benefit, but, um, we tend to leave a lot on the table, so we are evaluating that to figure out what the best option is because also, as we know, gas prices are rising, but we don't know if that's maybe just a short term. And once you make the election, it stays for the term of the franchise agreement.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask, is it your, it is the full?
So, we're, we're fully evaluating to make sure that we are getting the best, uh, benefit from Nikor.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, no more questions. Um, all in favor of item four E, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, aye.
All right. Item four F, consider draft ordinance affirming Title One, Chapter Five, Section One-Dash-Five-Dash-One regarding the election term and general duties, um, of the city council in the Geneva City Code. Can I have a motion?
So.
Alderman Marx, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Burkhardt.
Okay, so the Illinois Municipal Code determines the number of older persons for a municipality using the most recent federal decennial census. The code also provides that if the population of a municipality increases or decreases following the most recent census results, the municipality may adopt an ordinance to retain the number of older persons that existed before that census. The official census results stated that the number of inhabitants for the city of Geneva decreased to twenty-one, three-nine-three, and the ordinance for the city council's consideration tonight is to retain the number of older persons which existed prior to the most recent federal census results at ten older persons. Um, and just for a point of information, because this was asked late in the day today, uh, the, the Illinois Municipal Code would say for populations between twenty-thousand and fifty-thousand persons, the number of older persons would be fourteen. Um, so, what this ordinance does tonight is keep it at ten. Uh, we did this again back in twenty-ten after the census results as well. So, that's what's for your consideration.
All right, questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. Um, all in favor of item four F, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No idea what I said.
Nope. Okay. Uh, that includes items of business. We're up to item five, public comment and new business. Is there any comment for the committee? Nope. All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Alderman Kocrag, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anybody want to say? Okay, committee meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this recess and return to the city council meeting as previously stated. Is there a motion by Alderman Swanson? Second by Alderman Marx. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are back in the city council meeting. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session on pending litigation. Is there a motion? Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Caven makes the second?
Just a little insight.
I know, you see that? It was like, I thought he was bidding on something.
Roll call.
Yep, roll calls in order. Madam, madam, Ms. Dawkins, excuse me.
Kocrag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
And Alderman Mayor is joining us in closed session. Just technicality, she's not joining us at the moment.
We're going to turn the mics off for just one moment. We're back in open session, ladies and gentlemen. Alderwoman Burkhardt has the floor to offer a motion for our consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, uh, make a motion to authorize a settlement in the amount of. I make a motion to authorize a settlement in the amount of thirty-five thousand and eighty dollars as full and final settlement of a worker's compensation claim for Thomas Kruger.
Seconded by Alderman Coserog. Any questions or comments regarding the motion as presented and seconded? If not, Ms. Dawkins, please take the roll call. A simple majority vote is sufficient for this matter.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Burkhardt?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Caven?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Coserog?
Aye.
On the matter concerning settlement with Mr. Thomas Kruger, we have eight, excuse me, nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and one absent. With that, ladies and gentlemen, unless there's any new business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Alderman Marx makes that motion. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, aye.
Thank you all very much. Happy Tuesday. Good night.